Welcome to the August 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino. I am this season's chair and reside in District Two. We'll start our introductions, the planning commissioners here in the boardroom, then move online. We'll start down here with Commissioner Day.
Derek Day, District One.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Evan Pestner, District One.
Ellen Wheatley, District One.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Did Commissioner Hanson make it in tonight online?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we do have a quorum though, so that's good. With that, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda, and if so, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the audio as the official record.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Approved and seconded. With that, we'll call for the vote.
Person?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi.
Commissioner Pestner?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
I'm Chair Day.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
I have the agenda is accepted. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the meeting minutes over July 19th, 2023. As such, I hope everybody's had a chance to look over them and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll try again. To approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for July 19th, 2023.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the meeting minutes? A call for the vote?
Hi. Hi.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi.
Commissioner Pestner?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
I'm Chair Day.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi. The meeting minutes of July 19th, 2023 have been approved and accepted the audio as the official meeting record. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the public communication portion of our meeting. Those participating by Zoom, which I don't think we have anybody online at all, do we? All right. With that, we'll move to the boardroom and we'll call people up to that would like to address the Planning Commission. You'll have three minutes. We'd appreciate if you did not have, bring up topics that we've already held a public hearing on, and if you have not signed up, I'll still make a general call to see if anybody wanted to come up. When you come up, please state your name in the area of the county that you live in. And up first is Maria Treviso.
Treviso.
Treviso. My apologies.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for your service and serving as commissioners and for Thurston County. My name is Maria Treviso, T R E V I Z O, and I live at 3025 French Road. A lovely district, even though I'm biased. And that's why I'm here today. Um, you know, I enjoy fireworks. I enjoyed sparklers and fountains and all that stuff growing up and everything else. Yet this year, Fourth of July started way early. And it's not the legal fireworks we've learned to enjoy. Um, you know, it, a lot of things are kind of counterintuitive. We, we just had a ballot measure to support our fire services to make sure that we're safe, you know? You know, as they say, how do you work towards safety and then allow certain things to be unsafe? And out on French Road, way early, like even like before it was even Fourth of July, the M80s and the M100s are blowing up. Fortunately, I have a dog right now that doesn't mind it. But if you were on that app next door, there were strings and strings and strings of conversation. Some of it was trying to shut down the conversation, saying, well, that's a sound of freedom. Well, no, it's not. It's not. We have organized events where they do the fireworks or we have flyovers and other things, not illegal fireworks in areas that had been declared red fire warning, red flag warning. And it really strains all our resources. Even the 911 number had to be transferred, as you probably well know, to Spokane because of so many calls coming into 911 here in Thurston County. And it makes it dangerous if somebody needs a call. But I'll tell you, in my house, I live, I, I'm just shy of an acre. And I'm wooded. I got trees and I make sure I cut my grass and everything else. Yet I was scared because of how there was the aerial fireworks going over, over the top of the house. And it was really frightening and like I said, it started early, went in even to late in the morning, like three o'clock in the morning, stuff is going on. I know there's prescribed hours per the Washington and Thurston County regulations, but people aren't staying within that. So what's happened is you, you have the fireworks ban in Olympia, Tom Water and Lacey, but then people go into the unincorporated areas where on a good day, it takes 30 minutes, that's fast to get a sheriff out into our rural areas. So if there's trouble and there's a problem, you say, hey, well, somebody's exploding illegal fireworks. Can you help us out? It's not going to happen. It's not a priority call, yet it's dangerous. And I worry for the stress that it puts on our firemen and our fire resources, or how quickly something gets out of hand like what happened up at Shelton. And we need to do something. If we're going to close things down in Olympia, Tom Water and Lacey, we need to support our neighbors in the rural areas, not just in my area, because there was stuff going on at Boston Harbor and other places. That is just horrible. They go out Cooper Point area and create a problem for everybody. I want a safe community. And I'm begging you to really to take a look at this because it's not about if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. So I want to thank you for giving me some time here. But just go on neighbor next door. You'll see all the complaints that happen there.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Jeff Merriman.
Hello, my name's Jeff Merriman. I got two topics I'm here to talk about tonight. Agritourism and cannabis. As you guys are well aware, our regulations for cannabis zoning are the third highest or most restrictive here in the state. And cannabis has been legal in our state since 2013. It's also an agricultural commodity that is the most taxed in our state, bringing in over a billion dollars a year in tax revenue, which is more than any other agricultural industry in our state. But here in Thurston County, we are anti-cannabis. And it starts here with you guys. I understand from my years, I am a pioneer, commercial cannabis farmer in Rochester, Washington. But under definition for taxes, it's not agricultural, which I understand. That's not your guys' purview. You guys are zoning. And just like all of east side of our state, very conservative, very anti-cannabis, they're so pro-agricultural over there. And they recognize cannabis as an agricultural product that should be grown on land, five acres and more, because at the five acre threshold, that is considered agricultural. I am asking this board for planning and zoning to please recognize cannabis is agricultural. And that's it. You guys have been very silent on it, but it starts with you. There's already six code amendments sitting at the county level. It was the second most commented amendments, all six, 100% positive to get the policies changed on their end, but they need something from the planning to say, should we recognize it or should we not recognize it as agricultural? Agritourism is next thing. Right now, it's from your last meeting, I guess there's going to be something where they want your guys' opinion. I would like to see agritourism recognized for five acre partials also, because once again, five acres is considered agricultural in the state of Washington. And who's to say that you have nothing good to teach people on five acres unless you own 10 acres? Most people that have big farms, they don't want people from the city out there around their tractors or their livestock because things happen. What agritourism is set up for is to teach people so that way maybe they come from the city and rather than developing our lands down here to more houses, they'll buy a hundred acre tract to actually farm. It's a school that is not in a classroom. It's out there. So I'm asking that maybe you guys recognize that agritourism should be allowed on five acre partials and above. And so that's really my thing is just bringing those two big things that would really help out South County. We have businesses that are trying to move out here. They own 30 some odd acres of land, but because they're two acres shy, they can't put their cannabis farm here in Thurston County without paying a lot of money. But by you guys recognizing as agricultural, when it does go through, our normal commissioners will look and say, hey, it is agricultural. Let's give this five acres. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Marilyn.
My name is Marilyn Frask. I live in Boston Harbor. And actually, I should have followed Maria. I am, I'm here to support her ideas about what is going on with the fireworks. I was a simple story. I, I will confess to being the originator of the lengthy next door arguments that went on and on and on and on about fireworks. All I did was tell a story. Three men right outside my house on the street set up bomb launchers around five o'clock on January 3rd. Now, this is Boston Harbor. They're going to have the fireworks that night. No, they got to come in and do their thing. These bombs not only petrified my dog, who did not stop shivering, shook the window of my house and terrified me. I really thought a plane had crashed. I ran outside and there they are laughing. And I say, please, what are you doing? You can't do this here. There's a law in Washington to not do it in the street. This is a street about this big. From there to there, barely one and a half cars can get by. So that says houses here, houses here, my house is here, and these guys are over here laughing. Things are blowing up. I told him that I, yeah, I'm from New York originally, lived here 30 years. So my instinct is, look, you guys, I'm calling the police. Actually, they got a little nervous because nobody's going to come. They stopped. I thanked them. And I told my story on Facebook. What do you do when something like that happens? How hopeless. I'm 84 years old. I don't have weapons. What would I do? So Maria said, I could come here and tell you and just get rid of the bombs. If someone's out there with a sparkler, you know, these guys don't even know what they're celebrating. What they are doing is my one is going to be bigger and louder than yours. So anyway, guys, good luck.
Thank you very much. I don't have anybody else on the list that wanted to address the Planning Commission, but if there's somebody else in the audience that wanted to, you'd be welcome to do so now. Or did anybody else join online? Doesn't look like anybody has their hand up. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a work session number four for a long-term agricultural zoning update. I see that we have Maya and Ashley online and we have Jeremy here in the boardroom too. So I believe that they're going to start with a presentation.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. Maya T. Bull, Senior Planner with Community Planning. Sorry about that typo on the agenda. It should say work session number six. We're on our sixth meeting on this topic tonight. And we have a short PowerPoint to go through and Ashley and I will be tag teaming that again tonight. So starting with the purpose of today's work session, the Planning Commission has made several decisions so far for the agriculture zoning update. We'll go over a summary of those decision points that the Planning Commission has made and try and arrive at a final recommendation and the final remaining decision points. And then at the end of tonight's work session, we did provide some draft findings in the packet that was sent to the commissioners last week. Those are based on the conversations so far, but it's for the Planning Commission's consideration tonight. If there's anything missing, anything that should be pulled or revised slightly. So summary of decision points to date. We've had two work sessions following our public hearing on July 5th and July 19th, and the Planning Commission has made several decisions up to tonight's work session. So the first couple of decision points are related to some items that the Planning Commission was considering on the June 21st public hearing. We got a thumbs up to delay cluster requirement consideration with the periodic update, which will allow us to look at that comprehensively in relationship to our housing updates and also consider density bonuses. So we'll be able to look at it with a broader scope than we would with this update. We received a thumbs up to exclude existing mines from our agricultural resource designation. We received a thumbs up to revise current policy language within the comprehensive plan around limitations on accessory mining uses and non-prime soils. And we also received a thumbs up from the Planning Commission majority to further investigate farmlands of statewide importance as part of the periodic update. Again, we'll have a little bit of a broader scope to investigate that when we kick it to the periodic update. Additionally, we got a thumbs up at the last meeting to use a refined soils list, specifically using land capability classification one through three. And then we also got a thumbs up to exclude soils that had a land capability classification of 4W, which are those wetter soils. And finally, at our last work session on July 19th, the Planning Commission gave a thumbs up on several designation criteria. The first being to require a parcel to have 75% or more prime farmland soils of the subset list, maintaining a predominant parcel size of 20 acres, and then also reducing the agricultural block size to 40 acres. So many decision points have been made up to our meeting tonight. Those are all, those will all be reflected in the recommendation letter that goes to the board. And the remaining decision points that we hope to get through tonight are the first being recommendation on the code changes. We did provide that packet of code changes again and removed the cluster language that was in the previous draft that went for public hearing. So it's much more simplified from what went out for the public hearing. And most of those changes are to increase flexibility for agricultural operators and clarify standards. And then the final decision point is on the 4S soils, which are mostly those stony prairie soils and whether or not they are excluded or if we include certain 4S soils that have a higher productivity rating. So I'll kick it off to Ashley to go over the code updates in the soils.
Thank you, Maya, and thanks, Planning Commission, for being patient with me as I try to do this remotely. I haven't actually done it remotely with you all yet. So the code updates, you probably saw they, they are much, a much smaller package. And we got a lot of feedback on these from the Stakeholder Work Group. They were really focused on ways the county could further support farmers beyond just expanding the long-term agriculture zoning. So one of their ideas was to expand uses allowed in the long-term agricultural zones. Or sorry, LTA zone. So farmers would have more options to diversify their income base. They also told us development standards could be clear, especially in the agritourism overlay district. And when it comes to development code, clear standards make for streamlined and simpler permit review. And, and next slide, please. So when we started doing research for this project, following up on the stakeholder work group feedback, what I was initially surprised to find is that there were more uses allowed in the RRR15 zone than in the actual LTA zone. So the first step was to try and reconcile that. We also took a look at a number of other counties in Western Washington, in particular Skagit, Snohomish, Waltham and Pierce, to see what they allow in their ag zones. And a lot of them have updated their agricultural zoning, you know, district development standards. You know, just in the last few years, whereas ours date back to the nineties for the most part. And so what we came up with after doing all that research is really a two-tiered system. So proposing to update the list of primary uses, those are the ones you see in the left-hand column. And those ones would be, you know, permitted outright in the LTA zone, and they're more directly related to supporting agricultural production. What you see in the right-hand column is like a list of secondary uses. So if these ones would only be allowed on non-farm land soils or in the event that a whole parcel's prime farmland soils up to an acre would be able to be converted to accommodate one of these uses. So we're still really trying to protect those prime farmland soils while providing more flexibility for farmers. What accompanies the, this new list of uses are updated definitions and clear development standards, which will hopefully, you know, help make the permit process simpler to navigate both for our staff at the county as well as, you know, folks wanting to start a business. We have done considerable outreach to the agritourism committee, the agricultural advisory committee, as well as the ESP work group on this package of code updates. They've all been very well received and the respective groups are excited to see changes move forward that they've been talking about for years. And so at this point, I just, you know, but here to answer questions, I did want to respond to one of the things that was brought up in public feedback regarding the minimal parcel size in the agritourism overlay district. We got that feedback from the agritourism committee and the agricultural advisory committee as well. And so what's in the proposed package is having no minimum parcel size. And that developments, as long as they meet all the other development standards, and there's a lot of them in terms of setbacks, landscape standards, parking and whatnot, then the minimum parcel size really shouldn't be a factor. Any questions? Since I know this is one of the remaining decision points.
Is, is there a resistance I was to Mr. Merriman's point of adding cannabis to this?
Yeah, well, that was something that was not discussed at the, you know, as part of the outreach and currently all the regulations around cannabis exist in their own chapter in the Thurston County code. And so it is a, it would be a bigger lift than just adding a, adding a use here. And because of all of the community outreach that was done when that chapter was adopted, I think we would need to do, you know, more engagement just on that point, either as part of the periodic review or, you know, in some other, some other fashion, it's part of the docket. I don't know if, Jeremy, you have any historical knowledge of that?
Sure. So the cannabis regulations were adopted after quite a number of years of ongoing interregulation and modification the time it was legalized until the county adopted their final regulations. It is, as depicted, more restrictive than agricultural uses, and our code does specifically define cannabis as not being an agricultural use at this time. In order to change that, we really would need to go through the conference, the development code docketting process, get it docketed by the Board of County Commissioners, and then bring it before you separately from this amendment. The scope did not include touching that cannabis chapter.
And I will add.
I worked on that since.
I'm sorry, I had a bit of a lag. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Jeremy. I will add that we do currently have an application for a docket development code amendment, and that was brought forward for docketing earlier this year, and it will be brought forward again in early 2024 for the board's consideration to add to our work plan.
For that specific idea?
For, it's a, it's several cannabis-related code amendments, but yes, one of those is to consider classifying it as an agricultural use and permitting it in additional zones.
We'll go down to Commissioner Day.
I just wonder if there'd be any utility in us adding something like that to our findings around the, the docketing, just to help elevate it? Suggest that it, that it should be docketed?
At the time the docket goes forward to the board?
I would think, I'm just wondering if there's any utility doing it now, putting into our findings?
Putting into the finding for LTA that they should consider cannabis?
And in the same way that we're kind of hunting some other things to like the comp plan update, it would basically just be a recommendation to the board that they docket it when they see it. I support that.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, I think that's not an unreasonable thing at all as a, as a finding that the Planning Commission would like to see a second look at. Okay. You got the direction for that one?
You can do that, right, Maya?
Yep, I can do that.
Christian.
This is related to that, but is hemp treated in the same vein or differently?
Sorry, Mr. Merriman, but we really got to keep this closed, closed loop.
But I believe it's treated differently than cannabis, at least in our county regulations, it's treated differently. So.
I guess then my question is, is it allowed currently or is it something we would name, need to name in order for it to be allowed?
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Would we be able to say cannabis and hemp in our finding?
Sure.
Okay. Would that solve that problem?
I think reading through the code, it's, you know, any like plant or animal thing for use to people. And then if there's a part that specifically excludes it in the cannabis code, then that'd probably be covered by the finding that we had.
Yeah, hemp doesn't usually have, I don't think that's the THC level that the normal marijuana plant would have in it. So it wouldn't, the normal marijuana code would not apply. So.
Okay. So that's, do you guys have clear direction on adding that finding?
Yes, I can add that in.
Great. Thank you. Did you have anything else, Commissioner?
Yeah, there was also a question from the public, Mr. Jeff Merriman, that about agritourism, five plus acres is, we've mentioned just agritourism in this last slide prior to this. Is that something that's we would need to weigh in on or question?
I thought Maya said that there is no size.
My. The, the updated code that you have in front of you does not have a minimum parcel size because that was a concern that we heard through the engagement with the various agricultural related committees.
Thanks.
Anybody else have anything on this particular slide? So are you looking for a decision point right now, Ashley?
Yeah, it, that would be great if, if the Planning Commission feels comfortable kind of giving a thumbs up or thumbs down on the package of development code updates.
Ready for a formal vote?
I personally didn't find any issues with them.
On the development codes?
I found one possible, possible issue when we're talking about, I think it was at least special uses. If you were, so I don't have a page number here. So
paragraph?
Let's see.
Is it under 2008A.025 or?
Yes. Exactly that.
Ctrl F works great.
Even better.
So without, so if, let's see here. Where it says, or cannot be readily accessed without adversely affecting the primary agricultural use, I think there could be some utility in saying, or due to other, you know, site constraints. Like if you have like a wetland buffer or something that, something else other than just disturbing the prime farmland that could make it difficult to say.
Okay. Yeah. And I think that that, that is in more than just special uses. That is something that is also, that language is also used when talking about the secondary uses. And so if you felt comfortable changing it in both areas, yeah, the intent was that if the only, only piece of non-prime farmland soils was way in the back of a lot, you know, that you wouldn't necessarily want to, you know, impede the rest of the lot, whether it be agriculture in your case, or the case you're making critical areas that you could do that. No, I think that that makes sense.
Yeah, that was the only thing I saw.
And so just to note for the Planning Commission, that other section is the 2008A.022, which is directly, exactly, exactly what we're just talking about.
Shouldn't have popped to the poll app. I would have thought you reminded me.
Ashley, I got a quick one that might not actually change anything that we're doing here today, but I see that we're kind of moving forces from special to allowed, but then we're still not doing anything or we're still kind of hard on dogs. We're not going to have any kennels or anything like that. It's, what's, what's the rationale for elevating horses over dogs when it comes to this kind of thing? And I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Oh, I could take a closer look at that.
But.
Yeah, and I, I have to apologize. My setup is really bad, so I can't look things up while I'm on the Zoom meeting, but let, if, if you don't mind, while we're, while we're shifting gears, I can look into that. By the end of the meeting.
This is the special use table?
So I, I believe kennels is added as a special use in 2054 for the agriculture zone and without. And without knowing much about, you know, equestrian use, what I can say is when we get permits for commercial kennels, that can warrant some public feedback where folks like to go through the public hearing process with the hearing examiner.
Okay, so that's the policy decision there is that kennels are offensive enough to the community that they.
Kennel, kennels typically get permitted through a special use process. Yes.
Okay, good enough for me. Yeah. Well, hey, did you have something, Mr. Alfredson?
I was just gonna make the recommendation.
Oh, you were gonna make a motion?
Yeah. Move to recommend approval of the agricultural zoning update and amendment to designation criteria as discussed by previous planning commission decision points and further move to recommend approval of associated code changes to chapters twenty oh three, twenty oh eight A, twenty oh eight G, and twenty fifty four to increase flexibility for agricultural operators, streamline permit processes, and clarify procedures with the amendment as stated by Commissioner Day.
Second. Second. And is that also with the additional findings regarding cannabis and such?
Correct, yeah. So it's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the agricultural zoning update and amendments to the designation criteria as described by previous planning commission decision points. Further move to recommend approval of the associated code changes in chapter twenty point oh three, twenty point oh eight A, twenty point oh eight G, and twenty point five through four to increase flexibility for agricultural operations, streamline permit processes, and clarify procedures to include the cannabis recommendations forwarded by Commissioner Day. Yes.
Are we now deciding on an overall thing?
Yes.
We have not decided on the forest soils yet.
This is just for the.
So this motion does cover the whole package. The first sentence covers the agriculture zoning update with the maps. The second piece is really focused on the code change with recommend approval of associated code changes with the chapters that were mentioned.
Maybe we table that.
Would somebody move to table that motion?
Table the motion till later in this meeting.
Okay, motions table, let's do our, our forest soils first. Let's move on to forest soils and we'll come back to this motion.
You've, you've, you've made a lot of decisions and I, I'm excited that you're excited about making more decisions. But I'm glad we get to talk about the forest soils because I know that there are, there were a lot of questions. We did a bit more research and tried to put together some maps for the planning commission to take a look at. So the last remaining soil decision is whether to include these four S soils. And just as a quick reminder, these are largely our prairie soils, especially the ones that have that National Commodity Crop Productivity Index rating. I'm going to say NCCPI from now on because that's a mouthful of point five or better. They are considered primeth irrigated and are described in soil survey as stony soils prone to trout. Next slide, please. So when we did look into your questions about how forest soils are currently being used for agriculture, we found anywhere from thirty four to fifty one percent of the entire soils acreage intersect with existing farms. This, of course, won't translate directly into how much acreage would be rezoned since there are a number of other criteria like the parcel size and the block size that get applied. But it definitely does provide a sense of scale. So of the roughly twenty six thousand acres of forest soils with that higher crop productivity rating, it's about thirty eight percent that are being used for agriculture with the spanaway gravelly sandy loam soil being, you know, used proportionately less than the Nisqually loamy fine sand. And then next slide, and I'll turn it back to you, Maya, to talk about the maps.
So we went ahead and created some maps based on the two four S soils. And this is the first map that shows only including soils with a land capability classification of one to three and all of the other criteria that the planning commission decided at the last meeting, which is seventy five percent prime soils, forty acre block size, and minimum parcel size of twenty acres. So in this map, it adds about three thousand acres of new agriculture zoning to our existing fifteen thousand and about forty one percent of those new areas are existing farms. And again, this doesn't include any of our four S soils. And then the second map, this maps the four S soils that have a productivity rating that is point five or greater. And there are three of those soil types out of six total four S soils. And this brings the possible new LTA zoning to around seventy two hundred acres. And of that, fifty six percent is an existing farm. And both of these maps take into consideration all of the other decision points that have been made up to date. So again, the criteria that I just mentioned, pulling out existing mines, and then adding back in fringe area and joined parcels that might be smaller than that twenty acre predominant parcel size.
And so. A question about that previous slide. So what are the three, the three soil types?
The three soil types that are point five and higher are your spanaway gravelly sandy loam and your spanaway Nisqually complex, and then you're in Nisqually loamy fine sand. These are all the three that have a higher NCCPI above point five. And I believe, I'm sorry, I believe Nisqually loamy fine sand is the highest of all of the four S soils in terms of overlap with existing farms, so.
And then I had a further question, are there any other soil types that had a significant percentage in existing farms that didn't meet the NCCPI criteria you were using?
Sorry, no, they're really the Indianolas. So they're that soil that kind of transitions from the prairies up into like the alderwoods or the forested areas. And when we took a look at them, they were all, they were lower than the spanaway gravelly sandy loams. And those ones had the crop productivity rating of about points, like they're in the point threes.
And do you have a rough sense of what the estimated acreage was for, for that, for the Indianola? Is it comparable to any of those or?
Let me see if I can pull up that number. I have to dig through my email real quick, so it might take me a second here.
Sure, sorry. Spanaway, spanaway is by far the largest of them. But I don't know how it compares. So like the spanoway Nisqually, because there's two Indianolas. And then there's a much smaller like complex soil, like a grand mound soil that doesn't have that much acreage in it.
Well, would it be a real headache to include the Indianolas? As a fourth cat category of or S to keep in?
I would not support that.
Yeah, I think at this point, that, that's a decision for the, the planning commission. I know at the last meeting, there was, you know, interest in trying to take the four Ss and break them into smaller categories based on which ones were more productive. And definitely, I think when we looked at the percent existing farms, it, it played out and, you know, how much of an intersect there was as well.
And so Commissioner Wheatley, the two soils that you're asking about are the Indianolas. I just pulled those up, those combined amount to about six thousand total acres, so it's, it's not, our spanaway is kind of the largest amount of the four Ss. But it's not necessarily insignificant. And those range between twenty and thirty four percent existing farms. So they're lower than everything you see on this sheet right here.
Okay, and then a final question about the Indianolas. So you said they were about zero point three something on the rate, NCCPI rating. Is, are there any other, were, were there any? Are these the only ones that kind of made the cut above zero point five then?
Yeah, and that's in comparison to the NCCPI ratings for, you know, your class one to three soils are up there in the eight to ten.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, for the forests.
Yeah, for the four Ss, these, these are the only three.
Anybody else have any comments on these soil types?
Well, I have a question. Maybe you could discuss why you would be opposed to including the Indianola soil.
I don't think that it's productive enough farmland to set aside and cause the issues for the landowners. If they wanted to farm that land, they could, but to set it aside in perpetuity when it's really not that great a farmland to begin with, I don't think is worthwhile.
I wish I could see a map. Because we're, we're just talking about long-term agriculture here.
Yeah.
Versus agriculture in general. And that's, that's where my position is on that. I just don't see it as being that productive as Commissioner Casino stated. And it certainly doesn't represent the majority of the agricultural land out there by percentage wise or utility. With only twenty one percent of it being current agricultural.
I don't, I don't want to, but Commissioner Nelson on the spot, but I'd really like to hear if he has any thoughts on this. Actually, I do like to put Commissioner.
I would say that the three that are on the board have very questionable
Yeah.
soil characteristics for what I would consider long-term ag. Because I think there's just a limited number of things that you can do on them. And because I've stated before, my, my position on long-term ag is something that if you're doing something here now, if the markets change or whatever, your situation changes, you can pivot to something else. And I don't think that the Indianola or the Spanoys will meet that, meet that criteria for me.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
Well, I would just say, I don't recall reading that as a criterion within the LTA language though, so I'm not sure that that's, that's a primary. I mean, I appreciate your perspective, but I don't think that's necessarily the criteria they're laid out in the, in the code.
Well, as from a decision point, we have a, a pretty high bar because we're going to need five out of seven commissioners making a recommendation on any of these. And the way that I see this, we can make a recommendation of no four Ss or these three four Ss, or all the four Ss, or maybe just these three in the Indianolas. And if we had three buckets like that, getting five people on board to make that recommendation might be a little tough. But I think that we could do some polling to see how close we are.
Ready to make a motion?
Well, if you're ready to make a motion, you're certainly welcome to.
I move that we include the three four S soil types that are having an NCCPI rating over point five zero.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I will second that to clarify.
It's been moved and seconded to include the four, these three four S soils on. There's any further discussion on this particular motion? I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Halverson?
Hi.
Mr. Nelson?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Passenger?
Aye.
Mr. Wheatley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Mr. Casino?
Nay, the motion passes. So that we're going to include the three, the two spanaway and the one Nisqually forest soils into this, into our motion that was seconded but tabled. And now back to that motion. With this list, are we ready for any more discussion before we take the vote? And I will, I will restate the motion as move to recommend approval of the agricultural zoning update and amendments to the designation criteria as discussed by previous PC decision points. Further move to recommend approval of associated code changes to chapters twenty point oh three, twenty point oh eight A, twenty point oh eight G, and twenty point five four to increase flexibility for agricultural operators, streamline permitting processes, and clarify procedures. And that includes Commissioner Day's finding on cannabis and also includes the three four S soils.
Cannabis and hemp?
Cannabis and hemp. Is there any further discussion? We'll call for the vote. Oh, go ahead.
Um, I'm not going to support this motion. I think a few reasons. Number one, this was brought to us as a challenge from Futurize, the hearings board. But the hearings board has not issued a decision against us unless that's changed.
I'm not aware of a decision against us at this time.
So number two, all these soil classifications are based on information that not, that was not available to us at the time that the original recommendation was sent to county commissioners. There was a letter from Futurize and a few other people that included, I believe, thirty nine soil types. And thirty eight of them were in the prime if drained or the prime if irrigated. And I also, I think that in order for us to start putting more people into long-term ag, we need to first make long-term ag a zoning that people want to be in. And I don't see, I mean, at our hearing, I don't think I heard anybody who's being put into long-term ag that was happy about it. I think there's, even with the changes we've made, I think there's still a lot of work to be done on that process. We also, after thirty years, have a pretty pitiful transfer of development rights program. And I'm also worried about with gravelly soils using federal or state money to purchase development rights. And is there, I don't think there's anything in that that says that the county can, can't purchase development rights and then put other restrictions on that property. And that's a problem I think that the counties had is that in the past, they have, the county has used county money and state and federal money, but my specific concern is county money to buy up farmland, not just to do away with development rights. But they've also in that agreement have said, have taken away farming rights off of some of those properties. So.
Sort of like conservation easements? Are you sure? Passenger?
In favor of the motion? I would point out that at our last meeting, and it's found in our meeting minutes starting on line forty, that there was a discussion started by Commissioner Simmons about the sort of trade-offs. What if we were to, you know, take out the four W soils, would we be comfortable including all of the forest soils? And Commissioner Nelson said he absolutely would be. And I felt that that was sort of, okay, we're sort of making trade-offs here. And, you know, we ended up separating out the decisions of four W from four S. But I still kind of view that as part of a trade-off there. Secondarily, I've kind of discovered through this process that we talk about that our goal here is to encourage farming in Thurston County and to encourage long-term agriculture and sustainability and, and livelihood of that. And we've had a lot of discussions about individual farmers and do they benefit from this? And where do they benefit and where is this a negative? And overall, you know, Scott has probably rightly pointed out that this is not a benefit to any individual farmer. But I don't think our question here is merely, are we benefiting every individual farmer? Although I think we should do as much as we possibly can in that direction. But I think also our question is, are we benefiting long-term agriculture? Are we benefiting the sustainability of agriculture within Thurston County? And that's where I think the decision is a little different. This might be, some farmers don't like this at all. This might be negative for some people's property. But is it in the better interest of agriculture and the community for the long term? And that's why I'm in favor.
Go ahead. I just want to point out, I don't think I ever said that I was in favor of adding any of the, I think I've made it pretty clear the entire time that I'm opposed to adding any forest soils.
Not what it says in the notes, but okay.
Are you sure Wheatley, you have something?
Well, I just, I guess I would speak in favor with the observation that I think one of the things that set this. with the observation that I think one of the things that set this off is, uh, you know, we're currently awaiting the next census of agriculture. But according to the last census of agriculture, um, the county was losing, I believe it was three thousand acres a year of farmland. And that's very, you know, this is, this is where, what we're worried about. This is, this is one tool that's a, that's related to what we do as a planning commission to try to help with that. Um, this was sort of set in motion um, by the um, agriculture committee as well as the future wise issue um, because of the concern about the loss of of farmland. And um, that's been in the forefront of my mind. Um, it's not the only tool. It's the tool that we're dealing with right now. I absolutely agree that um, that the county needs to, and maybe we could make this a separate resolution or something that the county, you know, I would love to put this forward with the added um, request to the commission that they um, make an effort to uh, find ways of compensating people who do lose from this. You know, I would love to to uh, maybe have a resolution or something.
Yeah.
Outside of this, but I think for this, this is, this is about, I mean, this is what we can do um, to address this um, this crisis in the loss of agricultural land, future agricultural land. We don't know what climate change is gonna bring. And um, we don't know what future farming is going to look like. And and in regard to um, forest land, I mean, I said at the last meeting, what's forest land now uh, under a different people um, prior to colonization may well have been prairie. Um, there was, there were different kinds, there are different kinds of agriculture that have been practiced on this land and there will be in the future. So it's our duty to try to preserve um, as much future viable farmland as we can.
I'm sure, did you have anything?
I don't think so. I don't think.
I was just gonna add that I, when we increased the uh, percentage of prime soils from fifty percent to seventy five percent, that was one of the things that I was concerned about. It it basically limited uh, use of a lot of different soils from being considered an LTA. Because you had to have more prime soils in the, in the parcel in order for it to be considered.
If anybody else have anything on this, we have a motion on the floor. So with that, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Halverson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Pettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Wheatley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Day?
Aye.
Chair Casino?
Nay, that motion passes. All right, well, thank you very much, Maya and Ashley. This was a long slog at six work sessions, so we're glad that we are through with that one. We are. Uh, Ashley, before you go, I don't know, is there any way that you can write up separately a resolution that the planning commission would really like to see the B O C C work on a compensation program for folks that have loss of development rights? I don't think.
Yeah, we can, we can put something together and you can also tie it to the, have attached teaching initiative lead grant that will hopefully getting a draft contract from the state for, and so we'll be kicking off that work.
Okay, I don't think anybody on the planning commission have an objection to that from the way the room felt.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. All right, with that, um, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is a staff update with uh, interim manager Davis.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Um, just a few items for you. Uh, this last weekend was the Thurston County Fair. Seat head staff was at the fair doing outreach for our stormwater noxious weeds and also our Thurston twenty forty five comprehensive plan update. Staff are able to interact with over two hundred and fifty fairgoers. We had a very highest visibility location, um, as soon as you entered the fair on the right-hand side, I'm sure we guys saw that. Um, so we staffed that most of the, most of the fair days with very few times where we didn't have staff there for it. Um, so good participation on the part of citizens and a good opportunity for us to distribute information on behalf of the county and planning commission for our conference of plan update. Um, I also want to note that the board of county commissioners will be having a briefing on the grand mound and plan update tomorrow morning as well as the wireless code update and a proposed docket item for creating a natural landmark program.
So. Great, thank you very much. Uh, I wanted to go back real quick on um, our last item with the LTA and ask Commissioner Nelson if he wanted to provide a minority report since there was two names. Uh, you can think about it, and if you do, please.
If I get something together, I'll forward it to you.
Forward it to Tasha and Tasha will forward it to me. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, there's two opportunities and the rules procedure, there's the minority report and then also individual commissioners can have their items read into the record. Okay, providing to the board, so.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is our agenda or our calendar for the next few meetings on August sixteenth. We will be having a public hearing on the forest conversion ordinance and attentive work session for the capital improvement program. Is there anybody here that does not think they will be able to make that meeting?
Can I ask a question before you ask that question?
Please do.
Um, I see on here also listed August twenty third meeting, and if I remember from the doodle poll, there was maybe an August thirtieth or thirty first meeting, is that correct? Is there another meeting in the month of August?
Yes, that's correct. It's August twenty third and August thirtieth.
So I'm just gonna state again, and I've pointed out that I'm not comfortable with four meetings in a month. I signed up for this for two meetings a month, and I think two meetings a month is pretty good diligence, especially when we have LinkedIn meetings that go till nine forty five P M. Um, I'm willing on occasion to entertain a third meeting in a month, but I'm not willing to do a fourth meeting. So I would either request that you let me know which one you most want me to attend or that we cancel one of our meetings.
Uh,
The thirtieth is a placeholder. At this time, we may not need that additional meeting if we get through on the twenty third. Uh, the, the topic we're covering on the twenty third is the only item that'll be before the planning commission that night. And uh, with our last joint plan update, it only took one meeting, so um, we can, we can try to get through it in one meeting. If the planning commission would like us to try and reschedule that second meeting, we're happy to do another doodle poll.
We can make that decision at our August sixteenth meeting though. Okay, anything else? Here with that, anybody thinking that they won't make the August sixteenth meeting? How about, we should have a full house then for August sixteenth. How about our August twenty third meeting, which is the joint uh, plan meeting with the city of Lacey? It's like we should all be there, and then we will discuss that August thirtieth meeting as the uh, at the, in two weeks. All right, does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Go ahead, Commissioner Pass here.
I was uh, touched by the uh, public commenters about fireworks and uh, uh, share their feelings. Um, I would ask of the staff, uh, when would there be, is there going to be any opportunity in the docket or things that are planned currently for us to address that?
Um, at this time, no, the actual code that controls what fireworks can be lit off is not in the purview of the planning commission. But is in your purview, of course, are items that are actually in the zoning ordinance, which really have to govern the sale of fireworks. But we will, of course, pass those comments on to the board of county commissioners. We do receive them manually and we'll pass those on. So as soon as I get a transcript of.
The county commissioners and the county manager makes a recommendation to the county commissioners every year on the Fourth of July fireworks, whether to put a ban on or not. And every year since I've been here, all three planning, all three commissioners have voted to continue with the code as it is currently written and not put a ban on.
Right, and actually up till twenty sixteen, we didn't even have the ability to do that. I never got to inspect them, but um, yeah, we didn't even have that. And the one thing nuanced about fireworks regulation too, when you do pass a code change to it in that particular fireworks code, it's effective one year after you pass it. So.
I will state that I've only ever lived in places that have bans and it means nothing.
No.
Literally nothing.
Yeah.
They have the same exact fireworks in front of my house that she described and
Yeah.
I live three blocks from downtown Lacey.
We had them for four nights in a row.
Yeah, they go night after night after night, and they're horrible for people with E T S D and for animals.
As long as you have reservations that are selling them and these places that are selling them at Walmart parking lots and Safeway parking lots. Good luck.
Does anybody else, anybody else have anything for the good of the order? All right, well, with having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.